Good evening, everybody. My name is Stacy Bywork. I'm the president and CEO of the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce and want to welcome everybody here today. To my right, right? I have Henry Wolf. He's our government relations director from the Northern Michigan Chamber Alliance, which is a coalition of 16 chambers and economic development organizations in Northern Michigan and up to the UP. So he's going to be our moderator today, so we're excited to have him. So I'll pass the mic and again, thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Stacy, for that introduction. Great to be back in Manistee and thank you to all the attendees and the candidates for joining us tonight. Time is limited, so I'm going to head back to my post and I'd ask first our city council candidates to come up to the stage for an introduction. Mr. Barker, if you can go first and introduce yourself.
I'm Robert Barker. I'm 41 years old. I've moved across the nation several places. Finally got to move to Manistee three and a half years ago. I've been visiting here my whole life. Have my family's from here originally, so it's just been a while. Thank you for remote work, right? That was a huge help. So, yeah, remote work got me here finally. I got to be around my family and my grandparents and all of my aunt's and everything. And they, you know, have been in this community for a long time. I love it, always loved it. I finally get to be here, I'm happy about it. I have a history of working in the last like 12 years in corporate America, the power industry sector. I've done a lot of work in industrial analysis and training, software. Sorry, bad with words today, it's a bad day to be bad with words. But I've been just interested in development of government and just politics in general and how the climate is sort of developing and everything and what can be done on the issues. I always get talked about and published in the paper and my interest has just been getting growing over the years. And finally, that brought me to here thinking, you know, I've been doing a lot of reading about this. I think I'd be good at this. I think I'd like to be involved in this conversation more. I think I'm capable of doing this. So I decided to try it out this year and see what you guys thought if I might get a bit. So that's basically my story, the short form. So I guess I'll pass the mic.
Who's that here?
Robert, Robert, Mr. Barker.
Hi, I'm Cindy Lundberg. I have been fortunate enough to spend the last year in the position of city council member for District Three, which has had a wonderful, wonderful year. The council is amazing and I've learned so much and I really hope to continue that. I'm a school teacher. I teach at Jefferson, kindergarten, little babies. I grew up here, went to school at Jefferson. I actually was a student in the very classroom that I'm teaching in. Graduated from high school, went to Ferris State, you know, and I went away for a while and recently, about five years ago, I came back and I'm very excited to be part of the community. I believe very strongly in giving back to our community and this community has done so much for me, so it feels great to be able to give back to it. Would love to continue that and hopefully I will be able to after November.
My name's Christopher Schultz. I'm running against City, actually, third district. I moved to Manistee when I was 27. No, I've been here 27 years. I'm 36 now. Graduated Manistee High, class of '05, and I finally decided to get into politics after well, everything we saw happen back in 2020. Yeah, I'm concerned the direction the country's going. I'm really worried about the Constitution not being respected, people's rights and the bill rights and stuff of that nature. So I'm running, trying to make sure we want a good, clean constitutional government. Thank you.
First off, I want to thank everybody for coming out to this forum today and for the chamber for putting it on. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Seth Pratt. I have resided in the Manistee for about 30 years and I'm one of the quad rublets, in case anybody didn't know that. I am the principal currently at Onakma Schools. I have graduated from Manistee High School, went off to college, got a degree in teaching, went back and got my master's degree in special education and special education administration. And then I went back and got certifications to do gen ed administration and worked as a superintendent at a county level. And I worked amazing county for 10 years, always resided in Manistee and decided that when Onakma had an opening, I would apply for it and it worked out and I've been happy there. I've been able to work with the community, work with families, work with community agencies to provide for citizens within our community. So I feel like I have a very good grasp on where our families are and where our community needs are and I'm just looking for ways to give back. So when the city council position opened up, I had kind of thought about it before, but not residing in Manistee, I didn't know that I would have the time commitment to put forth with that. But now that I knew where to work within the county, I thought this was a good opportunity.
Many of you here, I think, don't be from the past in this area, so in reference to that, Manakshik in Guay, Minkun in Zering. That's greeting you in the language of our tribe, Little River Men of Ottawa Indians. I'm actually retired public affairs and public information officer and I've worked with FEMA, with the national tribes of emergency management. But when I retired in 16 and we moved up here in the early 2000s, I got involved in planning and that led, one thing leads to another, you know how that works. So at this point, I'm the vice chair of the Planning Commission for County. I am the chair of the zoning board of appeals for the city and I'm on the brownfield authority. And working in those also opened up another opportunity or a solid need, and here, this is sort of a tribal thing, so bear with me for a second. There was a need for soil erosion, sedimentation control officer in this county. So I went ahead and got that license by the state of Michigan and I had run the contract with the county of Manistee to provide those services. I'm protecting water. That feels really good. And again, a chance also to travel across our beautiful county. But as far as Manistee goes, I've lived here, I've had two houses here, well, two and a half had a condo for a little while. And my wife was also on city council on a couple of terms. So I'm very familiar with this area, with how things work here. I've been on the Chamber of Congress Board, the hospital board. I have tried to get involved and to give back, as Seth has said here, to my community to bring some common sense, but also back that up with some experience in how to make things work in government. Thank you. Much.
Thank you, everyone, and I did want to take a second to recognize some of the candidates. One in uncontested seat, Councilwoman Erin Pontiac is here with us tonight. And Councilman Dave Bachmann was unable to attend, so wanted to give a shout out to those folks. And we will start with District One. Mr. Barker, the Manistee Chamber is working to address a misconception that doing business in Manistee is difficult. How would you work to make doing business in Manistee, city and county, easier?
Well, I think what you need to do is, well, you have to create sort of a package and a sort of marketing campaign and sort of hunt for areas that are probably, an area that people would want to move from. So I would say, you know, you target probably areas like Lansing where the remote area, the remote work phenomenon is really taking off right now. So a lot of those people are going to want to come off the coast. So are we creating marketing plans and say, hey, come out here, we got this great town, it's beautiful and look, there's so much area for development? And we can show them all of the ways and all of the previously built plans, prepackage a lot of plans for them, just say, hey, look, we did so much of the work for you upfront, you know, look at how great this is, why don't you come try this out, talk to us, reach out to us. So a lot of that, I mean, we can fish, we can fish people, we can fish businesses from all over because right now, we're in a really crazy time. Everything just changed two years ago. We have this awesome window of opportunity to find people that are looking for, you know, kind of coastal towns that are sort of cheap to live in because, you know, you can't go out of California and find cheap coastal areas. You can't go out to Florida and really find a whole lot of cheap coastal stuff. So, I mean, and up here, you get a lot of the hunting and fishing, you got two rivers, you can go kayaking. There's so much about this area that we can sell.
Thank you for being respectful of the time constraints we're under and I do want to point out that all of our candidates, and you'll be answering questions as to your district, so District Number One will get one question, so on and so forth. And I did want to take a second to recognize Councilmember James Grabowski is also here. And Nick Samansky as well. Thank you both for being here. Our next question is for District Five candidates. What are your top three economic development priorities for the city and the county? And we can start with Mr. Pratt.
I guess my top three priorities would be supporting the businesses that are currently here and seeing what their needs are and how we can better assist them and provide for their longevity. Encouraging new business opportunities within the community, taking advantage of the resources that we have and how can we capitalize on that. And then I think we need to look at how can we streamline those so that the city and county businesses are working together to create a unique identity for the city and the county and the NSD that sets us apart from other businesses.
Would you repeat the question? What are your top three economic development priorities for the city and the county?
I'm sort of hoping you would ask that. Being a member of the Planning Commission and seeing what's been going on, I want to back up just for a second here. When you talk about politics and business, usually business thinks politics just gets in the way of your success. And the government thinks, well, we need you because you give us the money to spend on things. There's an interesting balance in relationship here for growth and for accomplishing what the community wants. And one of the things I look at, I've noticed this over the years here, I would like to streamline the process for the businesses to come in here, to handle whatever zoning and permitting has to be done in a single source, if and upon a store. But I'd like to also expand that to include the county. A single place where we could actually have somebody who comes in and says, I want to do something. Well, here's the place for information. And we, I think we have that to a degree, but it could be streamlined. Plus, on council, one of the things I'm desperately anxious to get involved with is looking at the regulations, the rules, the things which are there, which we consider laws. I want to go through and I want to look at these things, I want to take them piece by piece. And we have some regulations, if you will, which I think fight other regulations. I've seen that with zoning board of appeals. We'll have two parts of our laws in the city which conflict and then we are supposed to come up with an answer to solve it. So let's streamline how people can come in here and actually accomplish what they need to do. I will give a shout out to the chamber because you're doing a lot of this type of stuff, but I want to see the government step up and do their part to look at things and smooth it out so we can all meet the needs we want.
Thank you. Give a shout out to the chamber, so I let that one go a little longer. Thank you. And again, candidates, please, as we are on a bit of a tight schedule, please do your best to obey the bell. And thank you all. Our next question is for our District Three candidates. The question is, the Chamber Economic Development Program has produced successes and has matured to the point of taking activities to the next level. Do you support increasing funding for these contracts to hire more staff and retain talent? And we can start with Councilmember Lundberg.
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I know there was a lot there. The Chamber Economic Development Program has produced successes and matured to the point of taking these activities, successes, to the next level. Do you support increasing funding for these contracts to hire more staff and retain talent?
Yeah, that's one of the problems that we have here is the need for talent in, are you talking about talent within the chamber or just talent within?
Within the workforce.
Workforce, yeah. That's what I thought, so I'm going to check that. Yeah, that's one of the things that we're struggling with is it's kind of the cart before the horse. We have jobs that we can't find housing for people to come here and live and it really has become a problem. I know that over this past year, we've really put some time and effort and money into it and some positions to help us with both of those things, bringing jobs to the area, but also bringing housing. The housing has to be here for some people to work here, so it's kind of a, it's hard to like do one without the other, so it's a dual problem that we need to really focus on.
I think we need to take a close look at that initiative that you were talking about and decide how much benefit we're going to get from additional spending. If I understand correctly, a lot of this funding will come out of people's property taxes and I don't want to raise them, I want to try to lower them if I can. A big part of what I'm hearing from people today about the businesses trying to make ends meet, trying to prosper is the property taxes that are being taxed out of here. So I don't want to do anything that will raise people's taxes. That's the first thing as far as that goes. But if you could show me that we get more prosperity and revenue based on how many dollars we spend in taxes, I'll be interested in hearing about it. Thank you.
Thank you both. Our next question is for our District One, Mr. Barker. It's about gathering ideas, innovative ideas from other communities. What other communities do you think have innovative approaches or ideas to tackle economic development, business growth, and housing issues?
Well, I've been digging. Actually, I was watching podcasts this afternoon on my lunch break. The state of Indiana is doing a program right now to attract remote workers to their state. And then what they do is allow different towns to apply for these grants to create these marketing campaigns to attract people to the town. Well, and if you attract people to the town, you know, you get investment, you get more taxes, you get all sorts of positive benefits. We're not going to get a whole lot of people to our town if we don't solve the housing, if we don't solve the childcare issues, you know, if we don't fix roads, things like that. You know, it's about how we present ourselves and how we solve what currently exists and how we sell ourselves. The outside is going to be what drives our success as a town in the future. And that's, that's pretty much it. We know what our issues all are, we solve them, the people will come, the business will come. It's a beautiful town. We don't have, we have a great product already, we just got to show that we can handle it and then the issues will be solved. I have great faith in that.
Thank you. And our next question is for our District Five candidates and we can start with Mr. Zaring. The city and county land bank owns parcels or properties, excuse me, the city or county land bank owns parcels or property, properties, or could use funding to acquire blighted properties. Do you support the use of these properties to develop housing?
Two weeks ago, at the Brownfield Authority meeting, I sponsored or brought a issue to a vote, which ended up being unanimous, to the, asked the county commission, Jeff, to take a look at a process that we had identified where we're using land bank, Brownfield Authority, and TIF to come together to actually help reduce the cost for developers. It's something which works and something that's a collaborative approach that I think would help cut the cost for developers to build housing here. And it's a very exciting type of thing. I'm glad you asked that because I'm already in the middle of that one. It's something which I think we can do and it would definitely help bring people in to develop and build homes and things that we need.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. The city and county land bank owns parcels or properties or could use funding to acquire blighted properties. Do you support the use of these properties to develop housing?
So I think blight is a large issue and topic within the county and the city levels. I think that if elected to city council and even as a citizen and resident of this community, I would definitely support looking at what resources are available to take care of blighted properties. And if that means adding more housing in the process, I think that's a bonus. I definitely think that as residents, that's probably the number one complaint you've heard at city council meetings is blight is a large topic, so if we can do something and work with community agencies to improve properties, improve property values and make them livable, I definitely think that's something worth exploring.
Thank you both. Our next question is for our District Three candidates and we can start with Mr. Schultz. Mr. Schultz, would you support negotiations with developers to build housing or homes that will be favorable to the completion of a project? For example, offering publicly owned parcels at reduced prices to achieve housing goals?
I think when we're talking about housing, we need to think about what kind of housing. It's too tempting to cram people into high-rise apartment buildings and if that does not fit our town, I want people to own their homes, to build equity in the home, not to have 30, 40-year mortgages and generations of debt. As for your question, should we sell city property at a discount for housing? We have to ask who benefits directly. Is it for the benefit of the city? Is it for the benefit of a corporation, individual families? We need to have those questions because otherwise we may be at risk of showing favoritism, nepotism creeping in, things like that. Need to be careful about giving people discounts. And that's something we really need to have a discussion of in camp, in council and maybe even the people should vote on it directly because it is their property and we're talking about ceding it over to someone else at how much of a discount? We talking 10, 20, 50%? I don't know. I think that might be a bad idea. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. Will you support negotiations with developers to build housing or homes on, excuse me, would you support negotiations with developers to build housing or homes that will be favorable to the completion of a project? For example, offering publicly owned parcels at reduced prices to achieve housing goals?
I think housing goals is a big, big piece there. It's, I think we should not write anything off. I think it's worth looking at. I think it's worth thinking about, but a lot of questions need to come up and it's got to be a, the developer has to understand what we're looking for and what the needs are in our town. So I think that we shouldn't write anything off that could possibly bring us more housing. But I also think there's a lot of questions that have to go along with that, so I would say it's still on the table and it'd be worth something to talk about it.
Thank you. Moving on to the topic of childcare, and we will have our District One candidate and our District Three candidates both answer this question, starting with Mr. Barker. Our employers need to attract and retain talent in our area, but lack of childcare is an obstacle to fill jobs and get families back into the workforce. How do you plan to be an advocate for affordable childcare?
Well, I need to do a lot of research, I'm one. And there's a ton of research out there. I was just Googling around it, about it during lunch, I was trying to get ready for this. So I, and there's tons of articles, tons of articles. So there's, it's not like nobody's doing research on this. It's not like we don't have things to look at and solutions to find, we have to find them. Then we have to figure out where in the community those solutions actually fit. And we'll just, we'll have to just be careful, make sure we're, you know, looking out for everybody, we're not going to step on anybody's toes, we're going to make sure that, you know, that might be one of those things where the land bank could use, maybe there's a large facility that, you know, you could map up a place, land bank, somebody's trying to develop a nice, you know, huge daycare center or, you know, just anything we can do to facilitate that, the better we're all, you know. And not just one, we need multiple because then, you know, you drive down costs. You got just one place, they can charge whatever they want, you know. You got to make sure that, you know, you're, and that's an area, I think, where we were talking, they were talking about incentives for business, I mean, like tax incentive cabinet, wow, my goodness, yes, please, please, all of our needs, you know, give them tax incentives to start these businesses, you know, any incentive you can give people. We do it because we want to solve our problems. And if you have the people coming and moving here, you've got your higher taxes, so you can do different things. I mean, it's, everything is connected.
Okay, so this again goes along with the cart before the horse. Some of the time, people are not working because somebody's got to watch the kids and so childcare is a real big deal in this town. And having some recent conversations about, you know, partnering with some of our bigger companies, corporations, to see if we can come together on an idea for childcare facility wise, people working them wise and where they will get them. It's definitely something's going on. I know that MAFS has taken on a little bit of a role in trying to put together some childcare situations and that's been a little bit of a help, but it's not enough. So it's definitely something that is impacting our community, so I definitely think it's something we need to pull together on.
I think the issue of childcare, to some degree, is downstream of federal and state policy. We used to have really great jobs in these, this country where one parent working could support the whole family, you know, husband could support the wife, the kids, everyone, they did really good. Then we got deindustrialized, our jobs went to shine and everything. Now we're talking about people, two people working full-time, minimum wage jobs, trying to take care of their kids and we're talking about them paying a stranger to take care of the kids while they're working in these dead-end jobs. As for what can be done, I think we do need good childcare. Some of the time, we have public schools to take care of kids, I mean, that's more of a MAFS question. You have after-school programs, things of that nature, and I would like to see employers prioritize giving parents a nine-to-five shift so that their kids can be in school and they can come back and pick them up when they're done. I'd like to see that. But this is a complicated issue and we need to discuss it more. Thank you.
Thank you all. Next question, also on childcare for our District Five candidates. What are your ideas to help create more childcare opportunities for the people who live and work in Manistee?
So that's a topic that I deal with every day at Onakma. We have childcare, we have preschool, we have... Um, at Oneakma, uh, we have childcare, um, we have preschool, we have infant care, and we have after-school care. Um, we, just like other schools within this county and other childcare facilities, it is, uh, our number one issue is finding the talent out there that has the certifications. So I truly think, um, it's not necessarily always a space issue because we have some extra spaces that we can take advantage of. It's, we don't have employee resources to do that. So I think that means that we have to continue to advocate at a state and federal level to see what we can do to change some of the policies, whether that's increasing child to adult ratios, things like that. I also think that we need to look at how can we use some of our community resources to, um, get training and give that resources in far as educational opportunities to people within the community that might have an interest in going into the childcare, um, job career path? And how can we train them and give them some on-the-job training that opens up positions for local children or local families to provide that childcare?
This is a rough one. That's the good answers here. I think it's time for us to look outside the box, and that means probably stepping on a few toes. What's one thing we have a lot of in Manistee?
Senior citizens.
Churches. We have them on every block, it seems. And I know you're not supposed to put out, talk about God and government. Churches used to run programs for daycare-type facilities and situations. And I know, uh, again, like I say, this would not be popular with some folks, but the churches have space, and I think they have some background, some of them do. Perhaps we could work out something with some of our faith-based institutions to actually run a daycare. Uh, you, the thing is, you set down the parameters, what can be done, so you're not enforcing religion with people. I think we need to involve our churches and our faith-based population in some of these things. But just one, that's just one idea off the top of my head to answer what is a serious problem. We need to take care of our little ones. We have to do it safely, and we have to have that confidence that when we take them there, they're going to be fine when we pick them up.
Thank you all. Moving on to the topic of incentives for development, and starting with Mr. Barker. Our area has many historic buildings that have deferred maintenance or need major upgrades to bring a, a building back to use. Do you support the creation and approval of incentives to support redevelopment and creation of economic opportunities?
Yes, absolutely. Anything, anything you can do, absolutely. We, I mean, you, like I was saying earlier, you, you get more tax rather than, you're not, and you give up a little bit of tax rather than upfront, you're gonna get it when the workers start coming in. You get it back when workers start coming in, and then, you know, kids start going to the schools and, you know, the, the families with more teachers, you know, moving here and get more teachers, you know, and get more ambulance drivers, you get more firemen, you know, everything grows when you get more people. It's, everything hinges on getting, attracting people here, 'cause, I mean, you gotta, and you gotta have a place button. So it's, it all comes down to the same issues, doesn't it? It always comes back to where are we gonna put our kids? Where's our house? Where are we gonna live? You know? And you solve those issues by making the place appealing for business. Make appealing for business by, that's great, maybe, uh, appealing for business by, you know, finding out what those businesses you want around need, and then solving that need so they don't even have to worry about that problem. Uh, and you gotta, you gotta fish for that, you know? You gotta think about what in this town couldn't be supported with what we have, you know, with, uh, what sort of, uh, jobs can be filled? What, what sort of jobs are right for the town? And, uh, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Barker. And we will ask our District Five candidates that same question. I will, uh, repeat the question. Our area has many historic buildings that have deferred maintenance or need major upgrades to bring a building back to use. Do you support the creation and approval of incentives to support redevelopment and creation of economic opportunities?
So I think when we're looking at historical buildings overall, typically they're much more expensive to rehab than brand-new construction, um, especially when we're talking about taking potentially asbestos and things out of those buildings, um, that's pretty costly. So I definitely think, um, incentives should be something that we look at. I think there should be some criteria or guidelines that are put on the table in regards to that, um, you know, so that there's a clear understanding of what the expectation is, whether that's a timeline or something, so that if somebody doesn't just start demolition on a building or, um, start to rehab a building and then just kind of abandon that project. Um, so I'm assuming there'd be a criteria and there'd be a process for that. But I definitely think looking at tax incentives and anything that we can do to continue to maintain these historical buildings is something that we definitely need to look at as a city council and a community.
I didn't realize just how many cool historical buildings and places we have here. I was working on the Tourism Guide, uh, through Sammy and the Tourism Bureau. Uh, that, uh, we have Mark from the house, uh, from the museum, actually was one of the authors on that, too. And if you look through there, we have the most amazing bit of history in each of our little communities here. I don't care if it's Arcadia, Wellston, or wherever, we have some really interesting things. But a lot of it is in the buildings, particularly here in Manistee. If you look at other towns, they would love to have something like we do. So I think an effort to help them to be rehabbed or sustained is a good idea. I think that is a, a good contribution of our taxpayers' money to assist in that type of thing. And like with anything, you have to have parameters. So do it properly, and I think it'd be a good thing to do, to support.
Thank you. Our next question is for our District Three candidates on the topic of tax increment financing, or TIF. The use of TIF and other incentives can increase the property tax base in the short term as well as the long term. How would you communicate the value of these incentives to the public?
Does it matter?
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Um, so I, I think it is something that really does need to be communicated to the public because, uh, there's, uh, people who think that like, wow, we, we're losing out on all this tax revenue. But the bigger picture is that, that by doing that, we're rehabbing buildings that are just beautiful and need to be done, and we are bringing in money through what we're doing. So helping people understand that and understand how it works is really important because people might start thinking that we're just, you know, cutting the taxes for them, and it's really not. There's a lot more to it than that, so I think it is a really good idea. And I think it starts, uh, with conversations with our districts and our communities, and I think that's, uh, that's where we start with it.
Uh, I'll just admit it, I don't know anything about this TIF. I, I haven't read the literature enough, and I don't know. Uh, this is something we should talk about. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce obviously knows about it. If it's advantageous to the people downtown or wherever, they should take advantage of it. Uh, I'm of the opinion you shouldn't pay more taxes than you have to, and we should be looking for ways to lower your taxes, because when we lower your taxes, you have more money to pay your family members, more money to put towards your child's education, uh, to take care of your employees, if you have people work for you, reinvest in your business and so forth. It's all great stuff. So, uh, if this TIF lets you do that, um, I'd be for it, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the honesty. Uh, before we move on to questions from the public, uh, you all have stayed well within the timeframe, so I think that deserves a round of applause for all of your candidates. And then, uh, we will move on. That, that concludes the moderated portion of, of this forum, and if we have any members of the public here tonight that, that have questions for our candidates, please raise your hand. I believe we have someone with a microphone, or you can yell, whichever works best. Do we have any questions? Sure, go ahead.
Um, I would like each of your opinion and action towards buildings that have been in rehab for many years in the downtown districts of the City of Manistee. I would just like to hear what you would do about changing that as we go forward.
I think I'm done talking.
Seriously? Are we marking that down?
Jeff Dunn's, I'll get on you later. Um, as, it's the elephant in every room in town. We have buildings in our downtown that are blight in some of our opinions, blight is an opinion, and they have been sitting, one of them in particular, over ten years. Um, what would you do with the statutes or whatever to change this and get these buildings moved to the next level? Thank you.
Does it matter who goes first?
Go ahead.
All right. So I'm pretty sure, um, Jenny, I'm well aware of the building that you're referencing.
Two of them.
Yeah, two of them, same owner. Uh, my mother had a business right next door to the one that used to put a plunger out in the window and leave it out all year. Um, so I, I definitely think that as a city, we need to be aware, that's kind of when I brought up about, um, giving tax incentives for rehabbing buildings, about that project deadline and what are the expectations clearly laid out. And I think that's something that we would need to use city personnel and city resources to manage. So if we're falling behind in that timeline, I would expect there'd be conversations. There might be fines and penalties, right? And I think that doesn't take away the opportunity to present legal challenges, um, because I think that's a shame, whether that somebody dived into a building project that they really can't financially afford now or something. I think that's a conversation to have on the table because if they don't see an end in sight for that, somebody else might be willing to come forth and take over that project that would provide a resource to the community, or maybe it's that they just need some assistance. And with the chamber and the DVA, there's lots of help and opportunities available for financing and grants and things like that. So I think it's just taking advantage of those resources that sometimes building owners might not even know are out there. I, I think in this case, that's not the same situation, but I think that, you know, hopefully we can prevent it before it gets to this situation where it's fifteen years probably that now buildings aren't even usable.
One of the things I've learned in, uh, becoming more educated about planning, proper planning prevents poor, poor performance, I can say that. I would think that we might explore within the municipality, the city, a way that if somebody is going to rehab a building, pick one someplace, they come up with a plan. We're going to do this, et cetera, et cetera. Lay out the details about what you want to accomplish and how you're going to accomplish it, and include some timeframes. That not only would give, I think, the municipality, uh, some leverage to make sure things were done, but would also help the person who's actually doing the remodeling and renovation have a timeframe to work against. If you, you probably know this, if you're sitting around and go, well, I'll get around to that, I'll rake those leaves tomorrow, next weekend, I've been awakened yet today. If you don't have a plan in place and you're aware of what's in that plan, and you get the habit of following that plan, you're probably going to fail. So I, I would suggest let's help our business people and those who want to renovate actually set up effective working plans to accomplish their goal, which then becomes our goal.
Uh, I suppose I'll go next, and we'll run down the chain, give us some of this confusion. Uh, you know, if they have the resources to invest in maintaining their building, I, obviously, they should be doing it. But a lot of businesses around here are struggling, you know? The taxes are too high, they struggle with the economy, that's what you're all here for, you're concerned about this stuff. Uh, they say the, not just the economy, but the whole, the whole planet is going into a recession and a possible depression, and we're going to have to figure out how to get through this together if that does happen. Um, yeah, I would like to see them fix the place, and we have, uh, the Downtown Development Initiative, I believe it's called, and the Historic Downtown Preservation Commission, is that correct, city? Okay, yeah, yeah. So, uh, there are responsibilities that you have if you own a business downtown. You make an agreement with the city to maintain the building and to keep it beautiful. Uh, there's even rules about what color of paint you can use, and you go into that agreement when you buy the property. So we do wanna see people, um, honor their agreements with us, but I also understand that times can be hard sometimes, and, uh, we need to try and work with people to find a way to get this done without, you know, financially ruining them. That's, uh, that's why I have to say thank you.
That's a good question. And, uh, we, uh, on the city council, probably a lot of us in the community have, uh, been wanting something to happen there for quite some time. Um, and, uh, over this past year, we have really started to, um, ramp up sort of the, uh, the process for, uh, uh, blight requirements. And, uh, the one thing that I really appreciate that we did in this past year is really started to put deadlines to that, so that, um, if it's not met by a certain date, these are the things that happen. Uh, where in the past, it was kind of a, a open-ended, you know, do something at some point, and now we're really putting some strict, uh, guidelines to that and trying really hard to make that be the difference. We'll see what happens. Uh, I really do hope that's gonna make a difference because that's a beautiful location, and I would love to see some thriving business there. So thanks for the question.
I really liked Seth's answer, um, using the, you know, the town to give people, you know, a plan to move forward and go. And it's always gonna be subjective, right? Any of these properties that have an issue, you need to go out and find out what's going on, why isn't it happening, actually get the story, you know? Otherwise, you're gonna come out with no context. Uh, so, I mean, any, any time you have an issue, you gotta, you gotta find out what the story is, get the real context, and work issue to issue. And, and certainly, you know, uh, government is, one of the, one of the great things about government is, it's got a lot of resources to share, and it's got a lot of tools in their toolbox. So if you build, you know, you set up the right program, the right tools, the right, uh, penalties and everything, and it sounds like we've recently been doing that, so we're gonna have to see how that plays out. And, uh, and if there are existing tools that don't do the job, we obviously have to develop those and then make sure that they're not going to violate people's property rights for sure, 'cause we gotta, people have rights to their property, and, and we don't wanna step on that. Uh, we want people to own their property and be able to use it how they wish because it's their property. But, uh, obviously, yeah, we want our town to be pretty. We want it to be functioning. We wanna go out downtown and know that the shops are going to be open, and then we go in them and shop. And, uh, and so enforcement is a very important thing, but, you know, we gotta respect people and we gotta find out the, uh, individual issues, and that takes labor, and that takes conversation. And I'm not gonna pretend I have the answer for that right now, 'cause I've done a little bit.
Thank you all for those answers. Uh, we do have one, time for one more question?
I'd like to know the, uh, position made to each of your candidates on short-term vacation rentals and its effect on, uh, the housing challenges that we face here in the city.
Start with you, Mr. Zaring.
I hate to keep going back to planning. The thing is, many cities across the country have, and are facing that exact issue about the airborne, the short-term, all this type of thing. The solution, I think, that we've seen through the planning commission, and we have actually looked at this, is to set a certain percentage of homes which can operate as airborne or short-term rentals. Uh, I'm not sure that that's really the total answer, because again, a lot of these short-term rentals are really helping the economic condition of the elders. But if we were to put something in place which could say, okay, we're going to have, I don't pick enough, two hundred in the City of Manistee proper, and then we can actually set that up where they would have to be licensed. set that up where they would have to be licensed since they are business. And we stay within that. If one decides to go back into single-family or something like that, that opens up another opportunity. So I think if we structure that a little bit more to give the freedom to a number of our homeowners, but restrict all this, hey, you know, you want to use my garage for the weekend? I'm not in favor of that. I think we can have a more structured way to approach it. And I think that'd be the best way to go.
So I think there's a need for short-term rentals. I don't think, you know, saying no to any of them would be an ideal situation. But I definitely have concerns about the short-term rental situation in the City of Manistee. Within, I'd say, the last four years, there's been an abundance within my district and neighborhood. And I've seen a lot more within the City of Manistee in general. And I think it's something that we need to take a deeper dive and look into what is the reason for the increase in that property. So some people might be purchasing these properties as summer places or vacation places. And then they're offsetting the cost by using those on Airbnb or different venues. But I think other people potentially have long-term rentals. And then short-term rentals came up. And, you know, when you've had long-term rentals, my parents have had long-term rentals before, there's pros and cons to that, right? It's good when you have a good renter, but it can be really bad when you have a bad renter. And that turns a lot of people off to that. So one of the things with the long-term rentals, as most people who have secondary properties know, is that you pay the 18 mils in taxes. And that goes for the Hobbie Amendment and it helps schools and, you know, the community. And nobody is against that. But when you do short-term rentals, I have found out with several within my neighborhood, they don't regulate that as much through the city. So my concern with that is some people that have had long-term rentals found that out, and they switch them over to short-term rentals. And they are paying homestead taxes on that. And it's actually a topic that I've brought up to the city. I actually offered to help go through the websites and identify those properties. Because personally, as somebody who's been through the rental process and is willing to pay those 18 mils, it's kind of upsetting when you're buying by and you're going through the licensing and you're having your homes inspected to ensure that you're providing a quality place to live. Because my rule of thumb has always been, I wouldn't rent something out that I wasn't willing to live in myself. But that's not the case. I, I've been through some properties over the years that I wouldn't live in, I wouldn't walk through. I've opened the front door and said, yeah, this isn't going to work. I think we need to walk back out. So I think that it really comes down to educating the public on what is our process for this. I mean, maybe it comes to the point that we have to put a number in place. But I think it, it starts with going through and saying, what qualifies as a short-term rental? What right now is being reported and what isn't? And I think if we go after a lot of those property owners that aren't classifying their rental properties correctly, they're either going to decide to put those homes back into long-term rentals, which would be more beneficial and potentially help our housing crisis, or they might put them on the, on, up for sale.
Well, first of all, let me say that I don't believe the city has the right to tell people what they should be doing with their house. It's their property. They own it. That said, there's at least three vacation rental properties in my neighborhood that I know of. And the one next to me, it used to be a family home. I knew the neighbors. And these people who run a lot of vacation rentals, they bought it up and they renovated it. And I saw at least two dumpster loads of material leave during renovations. They must have done a lot of work fixing it up, put a lot of money into it. And now they're trying to get that money back. And I don't want us to do something that will all of a sudden change the rules of the game and cause people who invested a lot of their savings and resources into this business venture to just go broke overnight. So personally, I do want to see more single-family homes, long-term occupancy than these vacation Airbnb-type things. That's me personally. But how do we go about this, the question, without hurting the people who have made these investments? I can only think of tax incentives, really. That's, that's probably the only thing that we have. Unless you want to say to people, hey, yeah, it's your house. You bought it. You paid property tax, but you have to do anything we tell you. What else?
That's a really good question. And it's interesting, when you dig a little deeper and you pull back a couple more layers of what, what's going on, it, it gets very complicated. You can sell a house, and they don't have to tell you what they're going to do with that house. And they don't have to tell anybody. And then they can make those decisions to do that. And then trying to actually get a good handle on exactly how many we have in our community was also not an easy task either. I started kind of poking around trying to figure this out. Because my initial thing was like, oh, we need those houses for people who are living, living and working here in our city. And that's for sure, very true. And there, there's got to be a happy medium between the two. There's got to be a way that we can, you know, encourage people to come here, dine in our restaurants downtown, and go visit our places and be part of our community, spend money here, do whatever, and have the housing that we need for the people who live here and work here every day. So it's an excellent question. It's one that we've been grappling with, for sure, since I've been on there. But I know that it's, it started a long time before me. And really trying to understand the parameters and think about what's the best way to handle it is kind of where we're at right now, just trying to dig into it and really get a better understanding of what our as-is state is. And, you know, it goes right along with what we're talking about with the housing and how we need housing. And some of those short-term rentals are actually people who live there part of the year. And then, you know, they're snowbirds or something. And then they're gone for the winter. And then that, so even then, it's really hard to get a handle on what's going on with them. And the first part is really figuring out what your as-is state is and then figuring out how to couple that with what our needs are.
I haven't actually looked into this issue, is how to solve it, much lately. I will say that I've looked into actually doing it myself. And, because it's a great business venture. Oh, my God, you can make a lot of money doing this, really. And you can, the great thing about it is, you know, you don't have set hours. I mean, it's, it's a dream job owning all these properties of any amount. So, I mean, I can hardly say I want to kill people's dreams. I mean, if you, if you've got the, the income to buy up multiple homes and do some short-term rentals, we're proud to you. Very proud, very happy for you. But yes, we need houses. We need houses, yeah. We need a lot of them. And, I mean, there's certain things you can do if you wanted to discourage it. But I, I'd hate to be on that side. Because you, you don't want to discourage people from succeeding ever. I mean, if they find a way to succeed, great. I applaud you. I, I wish it for all of us. I want us all to find a thing that helps us succeed and make life better for ourselves. So, I mean, it's a really sensitive issue. Because you don't want to tell people what to do with their property. You don't, I mean, that's, I don't want to be told what to do with mine. And I've thought about putting mine out there, short-term rentals. You know, I work it only, I can go down in the winter a little while, stay, go see my family in Texas. I could do that. So I'm not really on anybody's side on this one. I, I kind of would just listen to, to the town when we come up with the ideas for these things and see what you guys think on this. Because I'm not real strong on one side or the other on this issue.
Well, thank you, candidates. Let's have a round of our applause for city council. We will take a very brief intermission until 6:05, and then we'll begin with our county commission panel. Thank you.